From the commission for March the eighth, the order at seven o'clock, if we please write for the flag. I put this to the fire of the United States of America and the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice. Could if we get the world on.
Thank you. Your house, Commissioner Ken Odell, Commissioner Van Domlin, Commissioner Nunenkamp, Commissioner Miller, Vice Chair Levante, Chair King, and your ex officio this evening is Councilman James Fage. Thank you.
Hey, I have a number five, the public comments this time was for P one, the audience around Zoom or comments or statements to the planning commission other than those that are on the agenda. I understand we have.
One spokesperson.
There's one spokesperson. So generally, the people.
I got your slides. Thank you. Yeah, great. I'm going to figure out how that works this time. Let's see. I think yes.
Actually, before you start in that, can you get?
I can give you an overview. I'm prepared to do that. I would prefer that.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Chair King. Well, planning manager Steve has dealt with this a lot, but since I'm city manager, I feel like I should be talking and taking the heat for this, but part of my duty. This relates to fencing. We've kind of briefed the planning commission on this before. You've seen some written materials kind of summarizing the issue before about the fences and the alley loaded homes in phase one, the Britten Hill Department thus far. There's been conversations about the fence heights, whether they're six feet right up, built right to the alley or they are three feet by built to the alley. We've had many discussions with residents, exchanged correspondence, countless emails with our city attorney and even our city's insurance provider about how do we allow and interpret the code for these fences in the, the, the heart of the matter is the clear vision standards. We're all familiar with clear vision standards for corners on public streets and fence sites and how that affects traffic and providing safety. So what we've been trying to do the last few months and working with homeowners and sometimes if our communication's got sideways, I'll take the heat for that. I want to be fair to folks, especially people that aren't new to our community and bought homes here. So I want to definitely hear them out. But a lot of this goes to the heart of the clear vision standards in our code. And the word alley and private drives are in there and the opinions of our city attorney and our insurer about interpreting those are pretty clear right now. So that's kind of the, the issue we're talking about here. I know several folks from Britten Hill wanted to show up tonight and tell their side of the story about what these fencing options look like. Probably the discussions they have with the developer when are when they're purchasing their home or even afterwards. So that kind of sets the stage, I hope. Jeremy, go ahead. Is that? I'm going to watch him.
First, I want, I understand that the finance were all on there. Thank you very much for, for your contribution to our city. It really does mean a lot to me. I understand that our goal is the development of our city and how much it's important. We can go to the next slide. So. There we go. So forgive me if this is rickety at all, a review. An overview real quick of the Britten Hill community and the various types of buildings in it so that we can understand and set the stage, I think. So along North Street, which is a lot of water, you see the orange squares. Those are multi-unit developments on the videos all together. The yellow boxes above that are the words state moniker are single family row houses where the garage sits directly on the alley. And you have a, they are attached and they have a side yard. And then ours is the black square there. Hold on just that for a second. Above that, the yellow area are your more traditional, single family homes, front loading driveway, rear backyard, that sort of thing, right? Our homes are kind of a mismatch of the two. It's really an odd mashup, but it works for us, I suppose. The, the, the front homes of the homes are uniform. The rear of the homes, however, have the extra feature of having a driveway different than the row houses would be where the grass is set directly against the alley. We have driveway and in many cases the fence or the backyard in this case goes all the way through the alley. And so we kind of have a driveway in backyard instead of driveway in front yard because of being alley loaded like this. We can go to the next slide. So this is my home model. This is the Rockford design. And you can see my garage square at the top, square below that is my driveway. And the red triangles represent the clear vision area. You can see on the left clear vision area, there is something walking back. It's my house. Oops. You know, I think this really kind of illustrates a big that the circumstances were, this wasn't what was intended by Pacific Community Development and Lennar in, in building these homes, right? They intended this to be a, a backyard and enter through the backyard. We'll go to the next slide. So theoretically, if I could add on to my house and add a back, add a garage extension to the end of the alley, I would no longer be in violation of clear vision area, right? This would match up just fine and everything would be okay. And we go to the next slide. And this is what would happen is I would have a row house would be the same as, as what's in Sunset Ridge and along the other row houses in. If we go to the next slide again, we have a comparison of the two. You see Sunset Ridge on the left and Britten Hill there on the right. These are both our alleys and we understood from some conversations that, that there was concerns about a tunnel effect. Well, we have a tunnel effect on the top as well. You can't see around that corner, right? We have a tunnel effect on our side. You can't see around the corners. Obviously, the same thing sort of occurs in both places. I don't see there really is being that much different, but that's when you're here, though, there. Go to the next slide. But what's happened here is we've really put what would traditionally be a front yard in the backyard. So if you think about big residential streets, speed limits of 25 miles per hour. You do or don't have stop signs. You're navigating those corners as a motorist. You need time to be able to address what might be oncoming. In our case, we, it's a very different scenario, right? However, what's we introduced here are some new challenges. This is Ava. She's three years old. And mom says, go play in the backyard. It's the only yard we have. We don't have a front yard because the front yard is all uniform on the street. She goes out with her balls, tosses them into the alleyway and well, because the fence is only three feet tall, she has easy access to the, to the gate. She just lets herself out into the alley where cars are driving to go retrieve those balls. We'll go to the next slide. Compare that to the same model home where this fence is still intact. Ava can't reach to throw her balls over the fence. And there's no chance of reaching that gate latch. She's way too scared for that. So that's one condition that this has created. And we'll go one more slide. This is a lot to want to bring that we breathe. The other thing that we noticed is standing outside of a bedroom window, which is directly against the alley. I can see right into a person's bedroom over that three foot fence. With a six foot fence intact, and I was the one taking these pictures and I'm six foot tall, so right in front of my eyewalls. I can't see into that person's bedroom. Some other conditions that were expressed by homeowners. Pets being landed in the backyard can easily get over a three foot fence, especially larger pets. Coyotes can jump over the fence. Predators of human kind might walk along and decide they want that pet sitting easily accessible over that three foot fence or worse yet, child. So it seems to us, just thinking about the way that I enter and exit through our yard, through our backyard rather. When I exit my driveway, I'm, if I could get over five miles an hour between my driveway and the end of the alley, that's, that's going too fast, right? This isn't the same as a regular residential street. It's just not. And if you were to look at the front of all of our houses, there's a pile of shoes on everybody's front doorstep. Because foot traffic occurs through the front of our house. When I take my dog for a walk, I go through the front door. In the six months that I lived in Britten Hill, I have never seen a single person walking down the alley. With the rare exception of maybe landscapers or construction, they're doing something else. So I think that the clear vision standard in this case is trying to solve a problem that we don't really have. It applies certainly to residential main streets. But it, it doesn't, in my view and our neighbors' view, doesn't really apply in our neighborhood. However, we've created some new problems that in my mind are much worse than what we're trying to solve. I would ask you, would you want to live in this house with a three foot fence? Those are my remarks. Thank you very much for your attention and the opportunity to address you. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy.
Someone that's packed the alley is one way.
It is not only one way. There is, there are two ways. It's either and one is around the corner. The other is along the other street. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that has something? Do you want to go ahead? Oh, I forgot to mention. Sorry, just a second. I'd like to provide Mr. Barner with a, a collection of excerpts from city codes from our neighbors and especially all around Washington, California, but especially the three largest of Hilfborough, Beaverton, and Tygar. Of note, they're, they don't have the same clear vision standard applying in this way. They have either removed it entirely or it applies only outside of residential areas in rural areas. And so my question there is, is there something really unique to North Plains that applies in this case? I think perhaps maybe we've just run too fast and this needs to be, we need to log like our larger neighbors have. Sorry. Thank you very much.
And I think all the planning commissioners have that. Yes. Different cities, yeah, thank you.
Yes, we said, we sent everything we received out to the whole commissioner body.
You know, we leave him to go on that later.
Later, it's fine. Yeah, thank you.
My name is Noah Leitney, future homeowner in the Britten Hill community. We are just recently joining and recently purchased a home and are kind of catching up on this whole experience in the last couple of weeks. So first, like to thank you all for your time, but then also thank the already current homeowners because we're kind of kind of attaching ourselves to a lot of that. So we just hope that this adds further options. And next slide. So we also have a three year old and find all the incentives that were just shared. Problem. A three year old, I'm sure that they're curious, they're blind, they know how to open doors, turn the doorknobs, locks. Doesn't do much to keep, to keep them inside the yard of like a three foot fence. And then efficient, you know, keep anyone else walking by to see what's coming inside of that three foot fence. While we understand that there needs to be rewriting of certain code or other information in the or legal wording. And like to present some, some idea of how we create visibility while also maintaining the six foot fence. Maintaining the safety of folks driving through the alleyway, but also keeping people in, out. Coyotes, humans, whatever. Use your imagination. Use just Google images. We do not have any architect tool or one of those skills. This is already pulled off, but trying to keep, keep that in consideration of, of what we're visualizing here. So. You can see the first option that was presented, solid on the bottom, three feet. Every other slide, many of the, the, the next slide. Somebody familiar with the last one, this is another design of the three feet three feet creates visibility above that three feet while achieving the same limitation for pending that. Slightly different, including with a little bit of a, a design. And if there, if there is a need for full visibility, every other slot in the vertical motion of also, or mostly designed also seems every other spot in the horizontal design. So there are options out there. And then Ozwire. And then you go to the next slide. Everyone's favorite chain. But as I, as I said, my main concern, I would hope to make everyone else, is, probably especially main concern is keeping them in and preventing anyone who's on the outside from talking to them. I'm six three and I can try to help you with this because one of those standards that we've established. So thank you for your time. And if there's any questions, please let me know. Otherwise, really is important to go ahead and step forward or feedback there is. Not only current homeowners, but also senior. Obviously, we've got some issues that we should consider and maybe workshop would be looking at our code and looking at other cities and finding out some kind of revision.
Yeah, I think that is an option. I think what the, the staff, I mean, the folks that are coming to you today are trying to request is some type of text amendment to the current code to see if we can get additional tools into the toolbox to help the city with the current situation. Right now, you know, the code is pretty cut and dry. We don't have many other options right now than, so you know, the staff is trying to uphold the code at the time. And so I think a workshop would be a great idea to talk about alternative designs or different code language or, you know, just different, different types of amendments that could be possible to address the concerns that you're hearing tonight. Yes, we could, we have time. We don't have a work session scheduled for April right now, so we could certainly put this topic onto your agenda for April 12th to talk about clear vision areas, fence designs and text amendments.
Okay, is that something we want to do for an hour, perhaps?
Well, I, I imagine we would want the whole hour just in case. You can see there's a lot of different folks here that have a lot of different ideas and we might be able to get it wrapped up in thirty, forty minutes, but I think to be safe, you know, we should take the whole hour.
So that's the plan.
I have one question. I'm wondering if when this code was written, it didn't capture the intent. And I only say this because I think it intended for including alleys to be recognized as part of the intersection of the public street.
Yeah, we've, we've heard some of that and then maybe that's some of the ambiguity that we can clean up through the text amendment. So it is more clear and objective on where we're applying the standards. So we're not stuck in that situation.
Was to have every single structure within the alley or that lot in the alley have to have a three foot fence. It was only where the alley met the public street.
I'll chime in here. I appreciate that. Big difference of opinion from the city attorney and how they interpret these land use laws. So I think that's part of the conversation.
And it was just a matter of where it was placed within the sentence. Isn't that something that can just be fixed without having to do?
A code amendment? We could do some research on that. Yep.
Cause I, I don't remember reading all of that when we were discussing. I literally thought it was just where the alley met the public street.
Okay, well, that can be part of the, the research and bringing it forward in April.
Yeah, yeah. Because that's something that we need to look at when it came about, when it changed because obviously it's changed for a few times and and so we get some background. I think you'd mentioned that, you know, with our last expansion, we didn't have alley loading on arsenal. And so this stuff modified for that. We just need to figure out what actually happened when this was brought in.
That, that will be part of the research and preparing for April.
So exactly in preparation for the twelfth, we'll do all that research and bring that information forward.
I'm wondering now, is all this is a side of the, of the park or? If you're staying or whatever, before the, the, there's, there's, it's only to give everything that I can.
Yeah, I, I'll give folks here my word. We can work with, with Lennar on that. We'll pause any sort of actions or activities regarding fences until we have some sort of resolution. Right. I, I.
Yeah, right. I, I think Andy just acknowledged that, you know, we're putting a little pause on that as we work through this process with you. So I think the ultimate conclusion will come once we get to the workshop and, and look at how the solutions are going to be implemented into the code. And if we need to make any amendments to the code, then we'll make those. And then once they're adopted and in the code, then they'd be available to be, you know, put into play on the ground. And so, you know, as long as we're working through this process, we're not going to sit there and do anything.
Hey, Andreas, if you want to testify, you're welcome to do so, but I just gave you my word.
I just want to, excuse me, I just want to bring up that, you know, the city staff and the planners responsibility is to protect the city. So if they felt that there were issues, they were working on that. The planning commission now is trying to work come up with a solution. So I think if we're all work together, hopefully we did something in the dark.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You have a hand raised behind you.
Do you want, would you like to invite others to, to give? Some conversation.
Actually, I'm just wondering if this is something that they need to talk directly to the city on each case. Because I mean, we're running a public meeting and we got other issues and so we'd give an ample time, I think, to discuss. So if the, you know, if that.
Yeah, you folks follow up with me or Steve personally tomorrow. We'll work through this. We'll work through this. We got the direction we need. We'll work through it.
Something the planning commission can't make a decision on. So we have to do planning.
So just, just so everybody knows, our hours are eight thirty to four. If we're out, it's usually during the lunch hour for about a half an hour. So you can drop in. I think most of you have my contact information. So just send me an email or, or anything like that or a phone call and we'll continue to work with you up until April 12th and then we'll have that workshop. We'll get a little bit more direction and, and you know, we'll just keep moving forward. Unfortunately, sometimes, you know, our wheels move a little bit slower than the private wheels, but you know, we'll continue to work through it. And like Andy said, we're, we're putting a little pause on anything that was in that letter. So I don't think I have to worry about too much right now in terms of, you know, any, any penalties or anything. No, it's going to be.
Yeah.
Well, that's all there is is the workshop. There's nothing before.
Will, will, any workshop materials will be posted prior to the meeting. Just like a regular planning commission meeting. If you have questions, oh, David, or, or specific input for it, just let me know ahead of time.
Yeah. So if you have some stuff you would like to specifically add to the workshop, like the PowerPoints or whatnot, we can certainly grab that. We'll go back and get the minutes and the history on when the city adopted the alleys into the code in 2007. So there's a little bit of that background information on maybe some of the conversations that were had at that time. That's what the minutes will help provide us with. But again, if there's other suggestions that you have or things of that nature, we'll also accept that and put it into the packet for the planning commission for the April 12th workshop.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
All right. Item number six is the approval of the minute. This is for February eight meeting. Everyone read those. February eight. Everyone read those? Are there any changes? Moved by Commissioner Nunenkamp, by Commissioner Tom Dell for approval of the February eighth as presented, although in favor. All right. Item numbers, that is a public hearing. This is a quad sided judicial public hearing. If you could give me the language for the public hearing.
Thank you, Chair King. The North Plains Planning Commission will conduct a quasi judicial de novo public hearing on city file DR twenty-three dash zero one five, City of North Plains Public Works Facility. The order of business will be as follows. The chair will open a public hearing and ask for declarations of conflict of interest, exporte contact or personal bias. The chair will request the staff report. The commissioners may ask questions at any time during the public hearing. Any written correspondence submitted on behalf of the subject application will be orally presented, including the individual's name and address. The applicant will be invited to present oral testimony first. The public will be invited to provide oral and, and/or written testimony on the proposed land permit first by proponents, then opponents, followed by those individuals who are neutral. Additional staff comments will then be presented. If opposing testimony is presented, the applicant will be provided an opportunity for rebuttal. Opponents will also be provided an opportunity to speak in regards to the rebuttal. The chair will call for commission comments and discussion. The chair will close the public hearing or continue the hearing to a specific date and time. If the chair closes the public hearing, a decision will then be entered by the commission. The decision will then be entered into a final findings of fact order, which will be mailed with a letter detailing the decision to all parties of the proceedings. Appeals of a land use decision must be received by the city recorder within fifteen days following the date the decision is mailed to the parties. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the proceeding and must provide their name and full mailing address. Parties will be notified of the decision, continuances, appeals or other perceived actions required by code and state law. The city municipal code zoning and developments and specify applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criterias and find criteria and findings of fact or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes applies to the proposed land use action. or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes applies to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the city council or land use board or to seek damages to the Washington County Circuit Court due to the condition of approval.
Okay, we will open the public hearing at seven thirty-one for file number V R two three Are there any of the commissioners which would declare any conflict of interest, ex parte contact or bias? Hearing none. Is there anyone that challenges any of the commissioners to hear this tape? Hearing or seeing none? Could I please give the staff report, agency comments, and written testimony and staff recommendations?
Thank you, Chair King, and hello, planning commissioner members. This is Steve Miller, planning manager for the City of New Plains. This is a bit of a unique application as it is a city application for the new public works facility. So obviously someone we're pretty excited about. This will give us the city an opportunity to to grow into the future and be able to continue to maintain our public facilities at a high level. So as Chair King mentioned, it is file number V R twenty-three zero one five. The request is a type two design review approval for the new public works facility. The facility will be located on the same site as the city's current water reservoir on Northwest Union Road. Staff, prepare a staff report. In this situation, as I acknowledged in my staff report, we relied on a consulting team to prepare our application for us to help eliminate any conflict there. The consulting team did an excellent job of preparing the application. And so instead of rewriting the whole narrative, we adopted the narrative as our staff report and then added the public agency comments to it where we we received them and then added the additional recommended conditions of approval to that. So that is the staff report. These are the applicable review criteria. So we're looking at section one fifty-five zero four seven, the design review, one fifty-five point three fifteen through three nineteen, which is the zoning district for the subject property, which is the institutional and public use zone. Then we also have section one fifty-five point six two five through six three seven, which is the public facilities chapters of the code. And then one fifty-five point six five there, zero three six five seven for the street standards. And lastly, one fifty-five point six seven zero two six seven six for the off-street parking and loading. We did provide a public comment, I mean, public notice to the surrounding property owners with the two hundred and fifty feet of the subject property. We did not receive any written comments during that notice period. We also provided notice to T V F and R, Washington County Transportation and C W S. We received a comment from Jeremy Foster, the deputy fire marshal for T V F and R, that basically said he has met with the applicant and provided comments on the application. And so we included those into the staff report. His underlying comment really is to make sure T V F and R has an opportunity to walk the site prior to it being finalized. So they can make sure that all the fire life safety requirements are are in place and represented correctly on the property. So a pretty limited comment from the fire department. Washington County Land Use and Transportation also had a fairly limited comment because when the city developed the property with the water tower, there was a right of way dedication done at that time, and there was a sidewalk installed and public utilities are also extended into the property. So with this particular project, it's not anticipated that the city will need to go out into the Northwest Union right of way to do any work at this time. But just as kind of a placeholder, they proposed the recommend recommended condition that, you know, if it is necessary, make sure you get the necessary public works permit before you go into the right of way. So and then C W S did not have a comment for us. In addition to this, we also held a public meeting. So we sent out note the same notice to within two hundred feet of the subject property. We had one person attend that meeting who was the adjacent landowner with the storage facility. That was the only person who attended that meeting that we talked for about fifteen minutes or so, twenty minutes. It seemed like the general comment we were getting was that maybe some additional fencing could be included around the site to help with security measures, but that seemed to be the the overriding comment that that came from that meeting. This is a vicinity map here. They just, I'm sure you're familiar with the property, but just to help get you oriented in the city. It is just west, east, excuse me, of the Glencoe Northwest Union Intersection and also a little bit east of Northwest Stewart Lane is the property with the existing water tower and and bermage around the south and east. This is the site plan. As you can see, we're going to have our driveway at the east end of the property. And then we're going to have, I'm gonna, our pointer has lost its battery. So I'm going to use the cursor here to kind of direct you where I'm I'm talking about. So down here in this area, we have our guest parking. This will be the primary entrance to the building, and we have our sidewalks connected with the sidewalks to the street. And then there'll be a gate right here in this area to gate this area off. You'll have staff parking here in the rear, some equipment parking in this particular area. And then there'll be the bay doors for the public work equipment in this area. We'll have our stormwater down in this area as well as using the existing pond that is behind the water tower right now for the stormwater. And then I'll share with you, I got some renderings that I'll share with you here. So the first one is an overview, an overhead view of the building and the higher site, if you will, that I just spoke about. So again, we got our, where's my cursor? We got our public parking, driveway, sidewalks, the rear entry into the building, staff parkings. This would be probably not staff parking, it'd be more some vehicles of, you know, that we have for the maintenance of the city as as well as some parking to the north over there. I understand that these plugin stations will probably move over to where this car is, and there'll be just one until we have a need for additional ones. So that would just relocate a little bit. This shows you the south and east side of the building or or west side, excuse me, the south and and west side of the building, where the entry is and how people can walk up from the sidewalk to access as well as where the public parking will be. And then we have the north side of the building here showing you the garage doors for the part, the bays for the equipment and how that would look. Obviously, we don't have all that type of equipment, so it's just a rendering. But it's giving you an idea of kind of the the size of that area, the doors and and whatnot, that it will be able to accommodate fairly large equipment back there. So with that, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the type two design review for the new public works facility with the recommended conditions of approval. You actually have, you know, three options before you tonight. One would be to to approve with the recommended conditions of approval, to approve with additional conditions of approval that you'd like to add to it or to deny the request. And if that, I will take any questions I can have. We, in terms of the the street, it is the county's street Northwest West Union. Right, and I I understand what you're getting at, and there's a little bit of a dynamic there where the actual street that provides access to the property is not a city street. It's a county street. And so that's why we provided notice to the county to let them know the type of facility that we would be building. They they did not provide any new comments to us in terms of that street needing to be upgraded. And my my guess on that is because it already handles heavy truck traffic from some of the other existing industrial uses along Northwest West Union. But we did provide notice to them to see if they had any recommendations for for street improvements for this project, and they they did not recommend any.
All right, I do. On page twelve of the staff report.
We actually do the review through three J for the civil engineering for the onsite. So the county would be the reviewer for any work that's done in the right of way. But we use our engineering consultant for the review of those plans for the property. Unless I'm missing something, Andy. So I understand that three J does our review for grading of property within the City of New Plains.
A a grading permit, that's from the Washington County.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that that could be a correction into that condition. Yes. Yeah, yeah. So maybe when we get through this process now, when you recommend what what you would like to do if it is including an approval, just make that note with that recommendation, and then we'll make that fix with the with your recommendation.
The other thing, could you bring up the C two hundred slide?
What slide were you looking for? I'm sorry. Not the slide, you must be to open up the decision.
Go ahead with your question, Chair King, while I'm looking for this. Did you say two hundred or what page?
Forty-five? Is this one here?
Yeah, C two hundred.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, the west boundary of the property on.
Sorry, I gotta share this, because if you have, ask an engineering question, I wouldn't be able to see it. Okay.
Yeah. The western boundary is not on north, it's the southern boundary that's on Northwest Western.
I'm talking about the western boundary of the property on western. So if you put your pointer there of that corner of that property. Right there with the driveway is, that driveway being shared with the property.
Yes, and we did talk with Washington County about that, and we provided them with an exhibit to look at. They asked that question. And our consultant provided us with a slide to share with them to show them how that would work, and they said that was adequate for now.
We haven't forgotten.
No, so. Yeah, yeah. So when that property redevelops, we'll work with them on putting together an access ingress, ingressment over our property so they can get access into their property.
I'm just curious. When they were saying this, this development here that did they ever think about removing the berm around this whole thing so they could use all the property that's there or maybe expand that feature or it seems to be a real hindering thing going on there.
In what way?
In what way?
How is it?
I mean, I I think the will say it's at a premium right now. And it seems to be a space that you will never be able to use now.
You can't remove a berm? Yeah, there's plans. If we need to expand, you can remove.
Design in a way that you can do that.
Yeah, to the, on the, on the east section. Yeah. Yeah, we're actually already overbuilding it for the next twenty-five years by adding a second floor, which will provide about fourteen office spaces. We don't need four bay doors right now, but we're building it out in that direction. Probably won't be enough adequate parking in the future. But we also visited other public works facilities around Hillsborough, for instance, a town that's more than thirty times the size of ours, has about twenty visitor parking spots. We're showing seven, so we think that'll be good for now. If we need visitors to get through this gate, they can park behind here. That's, that would be visitor slash staff slash big meetings and things like that. Yeah, they have engineers. Yeah, yeah, same, same here. We're we're stepping up more than, we're building more than we even need for for staff, but it's for the future too.
I just wanted to make sure that
Yeah, the the current, the current design is square footage. We we definitely considered all that. Do we need to remove some of the berm? We don't, especially given the budget we're working with, but in the future, we already got that planned out. If we needed to remove this section here, you can you can build through there.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Could the applicant please sit forward?
I'm Heather Austin, and I think you all know me, but for the record, they consulting representing the city this evening here at nine six hundred Southwest Memphis. I want to thank staff and the planning commission for reviewing this so thoroughly and providing the staff report and the presentation this evening. I think these are some great questions that are already being considered and some conditions being considered to add. We have a chance to review the conditions that staff placed, and we find that we can meet these. There's no concerns on the design team's side for being able to meet the conditions as stated in the staff report and also as stated this evening. And with that, the staff report includes information that this meets the criteria for a type three design review. And I and Ryan are happy to answer any other design related or staff, assuming that staff report, there are related questions they might have.
Are there any people who wouldn't testify in favor of? And the off on? Does anyone else wish to testify? You want to testify, you may step down from the table.
Do we need them to still have the card?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Say your name and address to the record, please.
My name is Jeff Jensen. My address is five one five Northwest Falls, one block, number eighty-eight, four one nine seven, two seven nine.
Having asked you, what, are you proponent, opponent, or neutral?
Neutral, that's my name. So I own North Plains Library and Self Store. So I'm, we've been involved with the neighborhood meeting, and I've also been following this here for quite some time, being necro neighbors here. And I talked with Leonard Miller about my concerns about security. And these concerns about security go back in with Blake when we got to talking about putting the berm in and follow that. My concerns have always been creating that, I mean, practical conditions for kids or anybody to come and they park hard back there, be hidden behind the berm or in the dark in the bright way. And so my concerns have always been when we have this spent sauce, so the police from Oregon State Police, the local county sheriffs are driving up and down the street, that they're not looking a hundred fifty, two hundred feet back into your lot, but yet you still have access to keep your trucks in and out of off of Western Road, go open the gate then, and then go along empty parking. And that was my suggestion to. Miller here on us, but I haven't seen any changes with that. From my comments at the neighborhood meeting and I would have. I've had troubles getting documents here. I've got them now and I saw them in the packet last week and so that's one I decided to come down and testify rather than send them there. And that's my primary concern, looks like it's gonna be a beautiful building. I wasn't excited about having a burn, but it's. In industrial area, I could have steel over it and you know, this is a water tank and burns. Forable for that, and so I'm not trying to throw stones at this, but. I have serious concerns about security and grading opportunities on this.
Thank God, can that full look and show where the fencing is and how the property is appearing?
Let me see, let me see the best. Yeah, that one.
Yeah, well, design isn't, Cherokee, may I? Yeah, yeah. Design isn't completely complete yet, but yes, we are anticipating gating that you see one gate. Where visitors are parked out here, there'd be a gate here. Another one, or yeah, no, sorry, that's where the the visitors' gate would be, there's a gate around the perimeter of the property. And since this will be a critical facility, I'm anticipating security cameras too, so we'll be able to have. Footage and monitoring on the back of this building, we currently have this on the existing water tower, it's a drinking water source. While the same sort of security apparatus here on the backside of this building. Some of the similar reasons, so between the gates. Mr. Jensen, is your concern not having a fence here with that one?
No, my concern is the gates a hundred fifty feet away from West Union Road, we had landscape and out there. The building, the road. From the control cars driving up the street, you know, we're gonna have six hundred fifty gig in the house, let's get them in the lot and we love it, we all love it. That's kind of the same place, is having opportunities for people to park and. Outside, out in line, this is not gonna be a building, man, the city. After dark and. That could be opportunity for, you know, I've got. Many dollars to put in the park inside of a storage facility. Unfortunately, we've had a number of break-ins, they put the house away aside. They all seem to come from the back in the dark areas and so. People have an opportunity to park back there and walk around your water tower and be back in my fences, that's.
Yeah, just again, I want to stress that this will be, this gate here will be shut.
Now, the gates are.
A little bit for the. Or whoever, yeah, but no one after hours will be allowed back here. During the working hours.
Coming off, coming off the drive. Is there active?
I'm gonna define this, this is what I wanted to share.
Yeah, yeah.
This is the one I wanted to show.
Yep, that's what I thought you wanted.
Well, you pulled up the other. So, yeah, I keep messing it up, sorry, but this is where the gate would be, so this is.
There is no gate for the front, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, I guess. My understanding is you come in off the driveway and then you can hit in between the building and the burn? Which is the concern?
You're talking about down in this area?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wouldn't answer that, it's not our question.
Well, we.
It's not a question.
There's, there's. There's a cherry stand piece of property that's attached to Bookberry Farms, it's on the other side of the road, that's, I think. Twenty to twenty-five feet, twenty. And there's no driveway there, so the opportunity for people to park cars in there is limited, but they can walk. From sidewalk and get footed back of both properties through that area. We don't have, we don't have a common property line between the water tower and my facility.
Right. But you are well fenced.
We are well.
So that's the front of the building, so it doesn't affect us any way possible and that it can drive around the front of the burning.
I'm not, I'm not driving.
Oh, you just hang out down.
People can walk down the road attract too.
Yeah, exactly. But it's a long ways to walk back with whoever.
Is there a fence between the building and that David? Right there? Was there fences in there?
Th- this will be the fencing plan.
No, I meant, so the gate right there that goes in front of the road. On left-hand side from there to the building is there.
I'm not.
The yard is.
No, yeah.
Oh, you mean back here?
No.
No, up by.
It was a white part of their next.
There's a fence right behind this. Here, that's a.
Right there.
Oh, there.
Yeah.
Yes, it's all fenced, yeah, it's all fenced, it's all going to be fenced, yeah.
This, you come across and then go down right there, back.
Yeah, and obviously the reason it's fenced right here, so visitors can just park here, enter in this front area that is.
Any other, any question? Thank you, Charlie. So is there anyone else? We don't see anyone on the. Zoom. There any rebuttal?
He only promised I'd like to make this that the building was designed for safety and security to keep the public and the visiting. Both separate from the yard even during the day because of the heavy equipment and the nature of what happens in the yard. But it's raining tonight, so it is fully enclosed here the other from the building.
Any question, a little rebuttal? Here you go, thank you. So, any discussion? Before we talk? Both of you, it's on fit together.
Intervention to approval of the grading of rising by North Plains, also through Washington County. As well as add a provision for. A joint easement agreement, keeping this top seven of those.
Exactly, motion, Mr. Commissioner Miller. Second. The group by Commissioner Miller and Detective Commissioner Donatant for approval of ER twenty-three zero one five. Excuse me, one fifteen, would the market tables to erosion and to access, doing access.
Just on the last one on the. On the access easement for the joint access, I just want to make sure we know where we're putting that in the conditions of approval, because we got a lot of different ones, I'm assuming you'd want that one under the ongoing conditions?
Yeah.
Yes.
They, the movement second, although it's very bad. Item number six, new business.
That is a good question, I know in the past we've been talking about our new business being code updates. I went back and I spoke with Andy and the finance director, so I could get a little bit more into the know on where we're at with that and what the city's. Overall goal is, I think tonight you saw during the work session that there was some. Code amendments that were brought to your attention that have to do with the downtown improvement plan and. Our finance director brought to my attention that there is actually some TGM money. Available for us to do a real comprehensive code update, so I understand that that is something that. We're working for and that that's going to be kind of. At right after we get through the UGV process, that's going to be kicked off to do the real major code overhaul, so it seems like instead of. Picking a chapter here and there right now, we should probably wait until after we go through the full code update. And try and address all the concerns that people may have with that, so.
You want to take conversation outside?
Yes, so just just to be efficient and to use everybody's time, you know, in a manner that would, you know, be most usable, it seems to make sense to. Go forward with the bigger code update and work on that than just trying to go through a chapter at a time right now. So that that's just a recommendation, if that's not something you'd like to do, back up with doing the sign ordinance. And and come up with some a new task to work on while we're working through the UGV process.
You know, obviously, with, for instance, the. Clear reason we're looking at Scott, that might happen to one of the consumers and this grant thing.
And and I think.
Might be other little things that we want to do.
I think that's an excellent point.
Obviously, as we have talked before, we have many, we need to have two. Appologies up there, ready to implement a code. Have that mentioned before, the neighborhood community zone disappeared, all the property.
And then my understanding is that that's that's kind of where the the comprehensive zoning code update would come from. So I think you hit a really good point in terms of, you know, we kind of heard something tonight that that could give us some direction for. Doing a minor code amendment to a specific section of the code that seems to be. Causing some problems right now in the city, so I think that would be a good way to focus our energy on upcoming city business. And then again, and Andy, please correct me if I'm wrong, but it does sound like, you know, from all your past conversations before I got here. Staff is well aware that, you know, updating the code is very important, and so that's why we went after that TGM money to be able to do a comprehensive code update. Is that accurate?
You mean concept planning? Sorry, I missed, I was. Distracting your meeting before that.
We were just talking about code updates and, you know, one of the things we were working on when I first got here was trying to look at the sign code and talking with. The finance director, I understand that there are dollars now that the city has acquired to do a comprehensive code update. That would probably follow the UGV expansion.
Oh, yeah, the, yeah, the concept planning, yeah, there's, so. I think the Cherokee's point, the NC zone has been on the minds, some. Tweaks or complete eradication has been on the mind of planning commissioners for a number of years there, so that's priority. But there will be comprehensive. Code amendments coming out of the concept planning too in anticipation of any sort of further. Before, prior to any further annexations as well. But I imagine it will be work taking place over the spring and summer.
Yep. Yeah.
Zoning and code, yeah.
And is there something that we need to clean up, why are we getting some code? Or that's something that.
In terms of future signage that could come onto a building like a Taco Bell. As you know, we don't have anything in the works right now, but there's, there's always sign applications coming our way, as you know, we just.
You know, that's why we want to address the time code.
Sure, sure. And again, great question, I just think since we're going to do that comprehensive code update, we could address sign, I mean, it's going to give us an opportunity to open the whole code up and and look at. You know, what needs to be amended.
Well, I agree with the painter or not, that signs got to come to us, so we should be proactive instead of reactive. So I think that's a higher priority than the whole comprehensive, so then. I would just, you know, the same thing, I just wondered if we were going to sell it and.
Yeah, so if I can be caught up and apologize, but not really, but I don't come to these meetings anymore, they're fun. But the sign, I'm remembering that was the Taco Bell, kind of a joint, the the large one, yeah, I would agree, it's good, because he'll come in with some sort of application, you had meetings on that. Was that just kind of? There was no resolution there, there's still work to be done, I think he came to a workshop, right, for ideas, but.
No, we never got that far in terms of having a work session with.
But that'll be.
All tied.
Like, that'll be a type three.
His would have been a type three, he ended up withdrawing the application, after some of the feedback, we we had a work session. And they, the they, the planning commission acknowledged that the sign that was being proposed was in the wrong location, it was too tall, it was, the scale was too big. I relayed that information back to the app and he decided to withdraw, they have not come back yet with a new idea.
So it seems to me like that could be revisited, I know Commissioner Miller had made some comments on. Maybe size of signs proportionate to the building size before that, things like that. This is just me, but trying to remember these from months ago, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that that will go later, I would, I would.
All and one of the other things we talked about is that if we start doing enforcement, there's a lot of violations, so to modify or. That some of the enforcement like that, you know, or some of the violations, so we don't have to enforce. You know, so I think we need to look at it overall, make sure that, you know, it's the same as this.
Clear vision, I, those two sound like.
Yeah, priorities, yeah, I I think from what I've heard, maybe what would be best going forward is to prioritize the clear vision. Do that one first. That might be the easiest one. You know, we probably don't have a whole lot of tweaking we have to do, there's just some language or maybe some deletions and additions, so that could be something we could accomplish fairly quickly. And then kick back up the sign code. And just to help you a little bit with the space age, you might be happy to hear this, they have that one sign that's kind of on the south end of their property, west of the very tall sign that's. Just sitting there with no signage on it or anything. It's been there like that for, we could find over ten years, there, we told them to remove that, so we are getting rid of some of these unsightly things, so they won't be an eyesore any longer.
So it's back, baby.
In in my short time here, that's been one of the. I've gotten more sign questions probably than next to the fence, if there'd be signs. No.
Item number nine.
I think we got them both, yes.
Yeah, okay. The item number ten is the. Landowner's applications and the city. Project monthly resort, any questions to comment on there? One thing, I just had a question down getting these. In our. Landowner's application. Think the start on February the fourth, and the last one will be sometime in November, which is nothing between.
Are there been building permits, other than building permits for Bryn Hill? The only other application I received and that was just submitted this, it came in last week, but it did not have the the fee with it, so we don't accept them as being submitted into the fees or in, and I believe the fee. Just came in and that's for the Bryn Hill Phase Three and Four Linear Parks. So we just received that, so that had did not get onto that list yet, since it just came in this week.
That, I guess, a question I'm like, the, if we, if there was, there was a report and I'm correct, that collapsed and that's something, it was through December and had. Something in November and we asked about the demolition from the demolition permit here and. Is it just missing or did they get it done?
It should be missing, I I've seen it on the the sheets, I'm not sure why it's there, but yes, they did to get a demo permit, it should be. It should be missing. I I've seen it on the the sheets. I'm not sure why it's there, but yes, they did to get a demo permit. It should be um. B E M um twenty three uh with a very low number.
I I only copy and paste the previous thirty days. For, so if you, if you'd like, I can do it like the two, two months, sixty days.
Well, that's what I'm just saying. It's the last report we got was as of December. And then this and uh first thing is February fourteenth, so.
Was there not one in the February?
Not that I was.
Okay, okay, so there's.
So if you could just make that available.
I will.
Yeah, so I think the ones that are missing that you're not seeing.
January first.
Is the demo, the demo permit and um and then this application that you just had tonight would have been on that.
Okay, just. For those files. So. Okay, then the uh D N B is city project monthly report. Any question? Hey, and then D N C is the plant commission. Calendar. Yeah, they were the I heard the downtown improvement plan and figuring out the public. Any questions or?
Uh not on those. Um I I if you would like an update though, I can give you an update on Far West. Um are you probably wondering where that other way is that application not coming before us? When are we gonna see this? Um they're gonna withdraw the current application and submit a new application. And so I'm not exactly sure when that's gonna come in. Pardon?
Is that why they did the property?
You, well, the property line adjustment was um something that they uh initiated a while back. Um but um but they've decided to go ahead and record it at this time, so they could get a legal description for the southern parcel. Because that's what they're gonna be submitting for now, is just the um spec warehouse building on the southern parcel. And then they told me that the far west building would come at a later time. They just weren't ready to go to it at this point. So and and they're having some issues with stormwater, with CWS for the warehouse building, so I think they're trying to just get through one issue at a time. Uh one is a warehouse type building, um and the other is the far west um recycle building. Well, the original proposal had both buildings being done. Um that's the one they're gonna withdraw. And then they're gonna come back and uh do a design review just for the uh warehouses, well, that was last told at this point. And then come in with a future application for the um for the recycle center when they're ready.
Okay, okay. Uh item number eleven, finding commission. I appreciate the flying out driving for. Thank you. Well, I don't know. I I was at. Have a question that I probably should ask when we're looking at the down downwind. I was just gonna ask those are the mention about. Just wanted to hear the discussion. Alright, so the other question. I don't know, maybe we should have done this beforehand too, but so for them to talk about this in the words of the. The uh the first guy that was up here with the thing stuff. I I got over here and say something and then thought about it later after we were all notified. The actual building. In the building.
Yes, there have been some um designs that should not have probably been brought forward.
Well.
It it it, you know, it it was certainly an oversight um when it was approved. Those were approved, I believe, in twenty one.
That's not city council. So city council and certification, but every one of those houses that is less than twenty three due to the hour is in violation of the. I know, well, in violation of a long focus, so yeah, that's why we live in. But then secondly, even the house, even the design that we have, uh frankly. We're not put on without consideration, R two point five and R five, even have our fifteen.
The thing that kind of created a little bit of problem on the alleys here is it was in the rear versus the front. So they had a rear yard setback they were working with, not a front yard setback that created, but then they had a garage, so that pushed it twenty. Um but as as uh Chair King has noted, some of those are only nineteen and a half foot driveways. They are up to four twenty. So again, there's just was some things that um were not caught that should have been caught at the time of the sign off on those side plans.
I'll make, I'll make, may I? I'll make one. It'll be quick. Just so everyone knows, though, the urban growth boundary expansion. Project advisory committee pack. Had eight meetings over more than two years and had their final one last week as a recommendation for a conceptual map. No, no decisions are ever gonna be unanimous. Um but a recommended map scenario and there'll be an accompanying phase two full. UGV expansion before coming to the planning commission. Um probably in May, it'll take a little time to report, uh write the report with all the findings in there. So we're gonna plan some sort of joint session with the planning commission and city council, so both bodies get to hear all of that together. There've been three planning commissioners on that pack. I know one planning commissioner attended the last meeting. You are pretty familiar with it, but. Everyone, so everyone can get up the speed on it. We'll do, you know, an hour um in April, I think with both bodies. Because even the city council has been aware of what's been happening, but we'll need to hear a lot of the, caught up a lot of same information as well, so we'll do that in April. Then I can't claim you weren't warned. No. Yeah, of course, it's a public process. Okay, that's why we're doing a joint commission or uh.
If there is no other commission business, our next meeting is XX. And here, unless you hear otherwise, meeting is the third at eight.